The District of Clearwater. Okay, our meeting is being recorded. I call to order the District of Clearwater regular council meeting for Tuesday, June 16th, 2020 at 2:00 PM. There in, are there any layups that anybody would like to add to the agenda? Saying none. Moving on to adoption of the agenda. We're going to make one change to the agenda. Item 15B will be slotted in after item 7A. So 15B will be 7B. And that is Mr. Crowe's presentation, re, uh, no, it was intent on, uh, the, uh, 290, uh, 2A Forest Service Route advertisement. Okay? Uh, anything else to add to the, uh, agenda? It's not going to get a move or a second. Moved by Council Taylor, seconded by Council M.B. Um, we're going to say all in favor on that. Everybody raised their hand, there's enough people. Thank you. About two minutes, any errors or omissions? If not, move her to the second or leave. Moved by Council Frizzle, seconded by Council Baffert. I think, uh, all of them favor and that has passed. No unfinished business, no statutory. Moving on to presentation. Arterial highway resumption. Um, apparently we bought some land that we didn't want, Mr. Dawes.
Yes, uh, it was a result of a legislative change in 2010. Uh, the highway, as you well aware, existed since it was a wagon road. And, uh, in 2010, they brought a legislative change into the Transportation Act, which said that, uh, any plans showing highway or road, uh, belonged to local government. It needed to say arterial for it to belong to the provincial government. So they've started working on this, uh, I believe in 2015, and then it kind of fell off the table again. So right now, I'm just trying to, uh, bring this all up to date. The two highways we're looking at are the Yellowhead, Southern Yellowhead Number Five and the Clearwater Valley Road. And, uh, I believe you've got, uh, the letter from the district manager there in front of you, which kind of explains things. To ensure that the highways were legally established, I looked at the 60 properties fronting on the Clearwater Valley Road and 131 properties at front on the, uh, Southern Yellowhead. We did not include any of the, uh, frontage roads, but I did take, uh, the highway intersections back to the edge of the curb return so that, uh, any cross culverts, uh, would be, uh, become the, uh, provincial responsibility.
Okay. Questions on that? I think it's fairly straightforward, the fact that we, you know, thanks for catching and making sure that everything was covered back to where it would be, uh, MOTI responsibility. Mr. Carnes, do you want to add anything to that, or you have any interest? You're okay with us not fixing the potholes before you get it back?
No, I'm fine with everything, and he's done a great job on this, so.
Okay. So there is a recommendation. What is the wish of council on the recommendation? So moved, seconded by Counselor Sim. Um, all those in favor? Thank you for your work, Mr. Dawes and, uh, Mr. Carnes, and we're not fixing the potholes.
Oh, thank you very much.
Have a good day. Yeah, with the palm trees in the background.
Yeah. Well, it's sunny down here at the coast. Maple Ridge.
Oh, yeah, 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 they look like Maple Ridge. I remember Maple Ridge. Never mind.
Okay, thank you. Bye now.
Okay, so this one page is here. Give me a half second to get on to, uh, item 15B, which is, Mr. Crowe, you might as well take it away, or, uh, comment on this, while everybody catches the pages.
Round 15, 16.
Page 62, 15B. Yes, okay. Oh, we can't hear you, Alex.
Okay, yes, thank you. I should be on now. I'm hoping Rhonda can bring up the slides, but if not, I'll just speak to them here generally.
Give a second, she'll be there.
Perfect, okay. So the subject property is located at 290 Road 2A Forest Service Road. Um, and we can see from the second slide, if we can... Jump to the second slide, please. Perfect, thank you. Uh, it is the site of the Trans Mountain Worker Camp, being set up across from the Eco Depot property. And the property is owned, if we go to the next slide, please, is owned I-2 Light Industrial. And the zoning bylaw allows this temporary construction camp in that zone. So it's all fine in terms of the zoning. Return to the next slide, please. Again, we can see it's the portion of the Eco Depot property across from the depot itself. And then the next slide, please, is the application detail. So the applicant, which is Atco Front Tech, is applying for a liquor primary license to be able to serve liquor to their workers and guests that accompany workers. Uh, they propose an indoor seating area of 130 persons. Obviously, they still have to comply with all provincial regulations surrounding COVID-19, but the 130-person limit is set based on building code occupancy. The facility is close to the general public. It is for workers and their registered guests only. There is significant security on site, and when I asked about whether the public could come in or not, um, the applicant did confirm that they could not. There is, uh, multiple stages of security that they would have to get through. So it's really intended for workers, and even guests of the workers can't just show up at the gate. They need to have preapproval, they need to have a pass to be able to get through the security into the, um, food area that they have set up within the camp. The proposed hours of operation are 5:30 PM to 10:30 PM, Monday to Sunday, so that's five hours a day for seven days a week. The final decision on these type of liquor license applications rests with the Provincial Liquor and Cannabis Regulation Branch, but the LCRB won't make a decision until local government, and in this case, council, passes a resolution that specifically considers noise impacts, general community impact, and considers and shows the views gathered from residents and how those views were collected. So for that, we follow Council Policy 1902, uh, regarding the processing of liquor license referrals and public input. And so for the next step in this application process, if it's authorized by council today, would be for staff to prepare notification mailouts and schedule a public hearing. And a staff report would then be presented to council, um, at or just following the public hearing whereby council can either recommend approval, recommend denying the license, or recommend approval subject to certain conditions that the Liquor and Cannabis Regulation Branch would then take into consideration. And you have to demonstrate how you collected the views of residents, which in this case, if authorized, would be through the public hearing and mailout notification and newspaper advertisement. So at this meeting today, staff is recommending that we be authorized to mail a notice of intent to nearby landowners and to advertise the notice in two editions of the local newspaper. And we also recommend scheduling a public hearing. So that's all from you. Thank you.
And I'll wait till we get back to, uh, full screen if we can do that. Okay, okay, there we go. Questions of Mr. Crowe? Counselor Sim first.
Um, I'm just curious, maybe somebody can refresh my memory. When they presented the plan for the camp, was this, uh, a concept?
No, originally, they didn't bring this up. I think this was something that came along later as the camp was starting to get set up, and there was probably demand in some of the other camps, uh, from what I understand, to be able to serve their workers without workers having to leave the site to, to drink and potentially drink and drive and those sort of things. So originally, when they spoke to me at least, uh, there was no mention of a liquor license.
Yeah, I, I, I will, I'll comment to that. I was, I was really quite surprised to see this, um, come about. Um, and had they, in their discussions, had they talked about any other means of transportation that they were looking at for other, uh, things in the community? I know that one of their intentions is, is how to, you know, spread that economic base, you know, into the community, but this would be a facet that I, I found, uh, you know, just, just really caught me off guard.
Yeah, I know, they, they didn't talk to us about alternatives. They were really looking that when they're serving food in their food, um, you know, their dining area, that they wanted to add this, uh, ability to, to be able to serve drinks. I think there's a limit on drinks, like they have certain internal policies that they're going to be doing, um, but there was no mention of alternatives. They were really looking at being able to serve in their dining hall. And that's why they applied now.
Okay, further questions, comments?
I do have another one.
Yes.
I, I'm just wondering, in their application, because, you know, it seems to me if people don't want to do the drinking and driving, that they do, was it considered that they just opened it up as a lounge, as a social lounge, um, you know, for that? So it's just a licensing that I'm, I'm just, I, I, it's because it was never part of that original plan, but I can see that having some social spaces where that's permissible. Does that require a liquor license where people live on site? What kind of a license was required there?
Yeah, that, my understanding is they cannot serve liquor, period, without this liquor primary.
I know, not serve it, but, um, uh, not serve it, but, uh, if there's a common lounge, so it's in a house.
Bring your own bottle.
Bring your own bottle, and you need a license for that?
I don't know all of the different liquor provincial licenses that might be required, but I don't think you can have outside liquor brought in when it's a communal area like that.
So it's my understanding that you cannot do that in a council, and they also have a policy against that. So they're basically saying, from what I understand, that they're, they want to recognize that people will want to go in a social lounge, which is probably also, they'll make sure they're held in a safe place, where they're not bothering, between the, from the social act, not affect them, and they're keeping the, uh, the, uh, handle.
Yeah. I do seem to remember that there was, it's being allowed to option, and there was a BEYOB discussion. Um, the liquor license, part of it is new to me, too, but what, the recommendations here is to put it out in the public, so we're not making a decision on whether or not we're going to.
Oh, no, no, I'm just trying to get the, the background, because I, I, I had also thought in some of that large background that there, there had been some rumblings that this was going to be a dry camp itself.
That's correct.
Um, so I'm just, I'm, uh, having been on a council that was in favor of this, and then having a, a new story presented, is, is this is, this, I, I want to be able to be able to address the public when they ask.
Well, you're correct. That, and admittedly, it was a dry camp.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and there were, there were options, and I think their intention is still to stop people from necessarily always using their personal vehicles. They had talked about bus service to various locations, and they want, I don't know if that's changed under COVID. Um, at this point, for that, it would be an intention to, to not have people just going willy-nilly that they actually have, uh, 14 faster bus service, something like that. Now, I'm having this guy.
And, and it's my understanding as well that they've applied for this license at the various camps along the route, so this is not just in Clearwater.
Okay, Council Baffert.
I just know one point I'd like to be drawing, and one point I did hear, I don't know if I mentioned it, I think to you or something, but they had talked about, you know, wet or semi-wet camp, and that was later on across the service, it's kind of intuitive.
Yeah. Uh, I only have one question on the recommendation, specifically. The 100 meters of, to, of, uh, the property, uh, 290, uh, Road 2A FSR, um, is the 100 meters a, um, set requirement under the Liquor Acts or the permitting thing, or could we expand that to the larger area for public consultation?
Yeah, no, it's not a set requirement in the act. It comes out of Council Policy 1902.
Okay.
So absolutely, if council can look at this one and say, you know what, there's hardly any residential properties nearby, we'd like to expand that to 300, 400, 500, whatever number council says, staff with this recommendation would, would do, would mail it out accordingly to that size that was requested.
So a 10-kilometer radius would be acceptable?
It would make, it would make for a large mailout, but...
Yes, it would. I would just want to be interested in some of the distancing for some other places that might want to include on this.
Yeah, which is usually why it's also in the newspaper, so that's where any resident, even if they're not from the area, it'll be advertised in two newspaper editions. Um, and so anyone wishing to speak could either write in or attend the public hearing or, uh, provide their input, uh, that way.
Is there?
Does the 100 meters, from the top of your head, cover the Legion area?
The, sorry, the Legion area?
Yeah.
No, it's just going to be the area, right, those adjacent properties, uh...
Or, um, the one.
Yeah.
The Ravens are going to object, yes, anyways. Yeah, I think, I, I, I'm a little concerned that that might be a little tight, but at the same time, um, this is, mail that'll notice is going to be intense, maybe we can add it to our messaging.
Yeah.
Notice through Facebook and other places, um, that might better serve the public. You got one more? Anybody else have one before? Counselor Sim has one more? No? Counselor Sim.
Uh, and just, just that for, um, Steve, I think this is one of the first ones that comes to council, does, you, I'm just getting a bit muddled. So if council just said, actually, this wasn't sort of in the community vision, could we write a letter that says it doesn't fit, or does it have to go to the public consultation?
No, so council can recommend today that, that a resolution be sent to the liquor branch recommending that the application be denied. You wouldn't have to take it to public input if you didn't even want it to get to that stage. I think the, typically, the liquor branch would rather make a decision after they've had public input, um, or seen, sorry, seen that the local government got the public input on their behalf, I suppose.
Further questions or comments? Not that we're all thinking about this. Um, so what is the wish of council? There are two recommendations. Recommendation one, uh, that staff be authorized to mail notice of intent to all property owners and occupiers within 100 meters of 290 Road 2A FSR and advertise two editions of the local paper for proposed new liquor primary license. Uh, what's the desire of council?
I'll move that recommendation.
Uh, Counselor Herring moves it. Seconder, Counselor, uh, Baffert seconded that. Uh, discussion?
Can we move that to further than our country?
You can make a friendly amendment to take it out to a farther distance if you wish.
I'm not good on measurements, so I don't know what that would be, but I think it should include...
A field area?
Think about, so, uh, 500 meters would cover the personal area. Yeah. Yeah.
Um, is Counselor Herring in?
Yeah, I'm okay with the friendly amendment, yeah.
Can we, can we just Google that for a minute?
Okay, we'll take two seconds here just to, we could take a ruler to the left.
Okay, but that includes Sunshine Valley?
No. No, I think, I think, well...
Like, um, if we had, Damla, Damla, you would include, yeah, you have to do a third kilometer.
Yeah, just, do they have a dollar or whatever?
Of the dollar, it must rule. You're, you're basically...
If we made for a lot, we'd just do the dollar twenty six, you know, for the, they would be profitable.
I think, I think you're looking at about between 100 and $200. Mail out of the areas that you're touching, yeah.
So to go from, uh, let's say, from the Eco Depot, uh, to the Royal Bank is, uh, 1.9 kilometers. And to go through the, uh, 2A Forest Service Road, it would be 2.1 kilometers if you wanted to.
By the crow flies or by driving on the road?
By driving.
Yeah. So, so at 500 meters, you would get all of the Legion, like the Legion property, and not quite across the street to the, to the mall across Young Road, but you'd certainly get the Legion area with, so everything in Mileen Drive, everything Glen Road, um, all of Mus, all of Mus, or part of Musgrave Road would all be within the 500.
So, um, yeah.
Counselor Baffert?
Just a quick question for our, the second recommendation there that would go to a public hearing, so if it went to a public hearing, um, anybody from the public could come at that point anyway because of the authorize, right? And that would be before council makes a decision. So you'd still get written public input or public input at that point in time from anywhere in the community, period. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
So it's covered anyways, it's just a matter of do, do we mail it out? Um, I don't think we have, we don't have a newsletter pending in the next couple of weeks.
Uh, the last, the first week of July?
Yeah, that's the last, but that's not, if you want, what it is, it's a small app.
We'll go to the newspaper, keep it competitive.
Right.
So, um, some of the times advertising on paper, one, but if we're, we will put it on Apple Horn around.
So we didn't vote on the, the friendly amendment?
Um... I, I'm just, I'm just thinking about, there are two, uh, sort of main subdivisions, the two trailer parks there, and I, I would be curious about some of that feedback there, so just looking at that. I mean, I know it's semantics and, but it is, it is new, it's a new introduction. They've got a new cannabis store that's opening up there, like that, these are some changes to their community. But I'm fine with the 500, I just throw that out there.
There'd be less traffic staying in town, hopefully, I know. It'd be interrupted, not that you would expand it that way, but, um, how many people are alcohol in the community, so it's, uh, not, not that it's a...
And, and, and it, I'm quite sure, once somebody gets wind of it, it will be out to all the people who...
Basically, that's, yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be on Apple Horn with the amendment. Okay, so there was a friendly amendment to take it out to 500 meters. Um, all of them with a friendly amendment to do that. Okay, we end up had, passed through an original motion, uh, so... The notice of, um, one, two, three, four, five, we are there at least at that. Second, uh, recommendation, that, uh, the license application number LL 20-01 before the public hearing to gather community inputs. So moved, like, seconded by Council Taylor, um, question, being done, all of them favor, and that has passed. Thank you, Mr. Crowe.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, bye-bye.
That would run back to the beginning, like Back to the Future of Government. Um, so no notifications, mayor's reports, second here. A lot of phone calls, a lot of discussion with, uh, community members on specific... Issues, a call with the, basically, the Tona area mayor, the premier, and Minister Selena Robinson, and it was part of ours, um, every two weeks, call with Minister Robinson, um, to discuss issues, we're all in the same boat, well, we're all in the same ocean. Lot of discussion about specific items like opening pools, um, the discussion on the hockey camp, not strictly related to that, but sports, um, serve, um, yeah, are everywhere. Uh, ninth, we had a Fortune Working Group meeting, uh, took a couple of other calls on some of the actions to hopefully get some, um, fiber out of the North Tulsa Valley to help, uh, a couple of industry, um, people that are struggling. Uh, the eleventh was agenda setting and office hours, and also did a TMX legacy funding discussion, um, which we'll talk about later as well. Um, Counselor Baffert?
Um, thank you, Mayor Blackwell. Pretty glad for me, just keeping up on emails and, and reading information, I kind of go online and stuff, but it's not, not too much, everybody just staying close to home.
Thank you. Counselor Frizzle?
Um, we received the money, um, from two different locations, North Tulsa Community Foundation and, uh, Interior Community Services. So currently, we're working on getting some weaving, being seniors, we're just working on, um, getting some coupons and, uh, BILO cards and gas cards to some vulnerable seniors. Um, we have lots of other plans, so we're discussing plans on other things, so there's hopefully going to be more things to report. Um, we went around and got, I think it was nine seniors that had a, um, worked wisdom for the, the 2020 grads, and so we got pictures of them last week. It's a fun day going around, they're excited to be able to do that, so they're, that's going to be part of their slideshow that are going to be, um, seen on their grad nights. So that's been fun. And then YCS has gotten rid of all their black chairs that have been ripped and torn and stuff, and so the Men Shins has got that, so we picked them up yesterday, and now we're down in their place. So when they're ready to get going, that's like, so, and that's, I think, but again.
Excellent. Yeah, I, I saw the chair being unloaded down there, wondered what's going on. Oh, I'm going, I hope they're not fixing them, sending them back out. Counselor Herring?
Uh, no update from me this week.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Blackwell. A quiet couple of weeks for me. I did step in, uh, attempted to step in for you for a TMX call on Friday the 12th, but due to some technical difficulties, I was unable to partake in that.
Yeah, thank you for your attempt. Apparently, we have a PowerPoint that's been, was going to be mailed to us, so. Counselor Sim?
Um, so, first of all, I want to thank everybody who contributed to 100 People That Care for Deanna Wood. Um, just, just the fact that so many people in this building participated, that was really great, and both Lynn and I are very, very appreciative of your generosity. It was a, a really great afternoon. We want to thank BILO for opening up, um, you know, their, their, their stoop for us for an hour. Um, and I think one of the, the nicest things that came out of it is, in speaking to the family, is, uh, we talk a lot about some of the mental health issues within the community. And the comment was, before this, I was very, very anxious, and I wasn't sure how to get through. And now, thanks to the outpouring of the community, um, they felt empowered, they're completely motivated, they're powering through appointments and organization, and there's just been a real lift to the ability that, yes, I can do this, we can do hard things. So I want to say thank you very much for that, and just always have an environment that's marvelous. She and I did meet on some different, um, thoughts that we want to put forward for, you know, identifying, um, seniors in the community. There was a Silda, uh, meeting, it did not look like the Silda convention's going to come through, so they're looking at doing a speaker series. At UVTM, they will be having each area association, and it's going to all be virtual, uh, so there will be an hour. And I found it interesting that, um, the attendance for UVTM, even though it will be virtual, will still have a cost to it, so I think that's going to be something that council will have to, um, consider. With that, a lot going on at SD 73, with kind of that first week back to school, um, it looked to be about 38% of students for elementary school K-6 were back, um, a little bit less, like in the 20s, um, for that secondary, uh, thing. This week, they're just moving to get, um, the, the grads through to make sure that they're passing all their benchmarks. And, uh, the grads this week are doing, um, their car rally type things in the community, so that's, that's, it's nice that we're going to still see their, their presence in that, and they will be doing, all, all this week, they're doing their virtual graduations, so...
Yeah.
I just really feel bad for these kids. Yeah, lots of, lots of things. And see with the grade sevens and, you know, different milestones, it makes kids really happy out, so, and that's nice.
Okay, Counselor Taylor?
Uh, so we had a trust national meeting on the 9th of June, uh, Tuesday, where we, uh, did a walk of the, um, new trail, or the, uh, Stillness Development's new trail, um, from Windki Ridge to, to the Roundabout, uh, which has come out really well, and it's going to be a really, um, great addition to, um, the community in, in that area of camp. Um, and, uh, I guess I'll speak to the recommendation when we get to the committee.
Thank you. Committee of the whole minutes. Counselor McKenzie, there is a recommendation under, there.
Yes, we have a recommendation that the minutes to the Infrastructure Committee of the whole meeting held June 2nd, 2020, be received.
Seconder for that? Counselor Frizzle, all of them favor? There we go, that has passed. Committee of the whole reports, Economic Development, Counselor Sim?
Uh, so the next meeting is July the 14th.
Infrastructure, Counselor Kenzie?
Next meeting, August 18th.
Parks and Rec, Counselor Herring, anything to report out?
Uh, we just met earlier today, nothing to report out at this point. Um, next meeting should be in a few months.
Counselor Taylor?
Uh, finance and organized meetings, December 1st.
Okay, moving on to standing committee reports, Joint Services Advisory Council, the committee, Counselor Frizzle.
Right, committee's July 15th.
And back to Trail Task Force Committee, Counselor Taylor?
Yes, so, um, council, may recall, what was it, the presentation for Peter, uh, last November?
Yeah.
Uh, where we discussed the different design options.
Uh, where we discussed the different design options, um, for the old. We're now from, uh, the highway, um, down to, uh, Dutch Lake, uh, British Beach. Um, and it's happening, I can't remember if it goes beyond, we're going to be on the, uh, speech.
Yeah, maybe the intention would be at least for the fire breakers.
Okay, so at least gonna have to fire it, but potentially then connecting up with the new park at 350. Um, but essentially this is looking to provide a north east pathway that would run, um, how far to, uh, to the road? Well, it's run alongside the road, um, uh, past parking lot. Uh, we've been having parking for the beach, the roadside parking with the, next to, next to the, the path. So basically that will be the path and the parking and the actual two lanes, uh, a two-way traffic. Um, so it would move the traffic more to the south side of the highway. Um, and so it would discourage people from parking both sides, um, but allow that pathway for, for bikes and pedestrians to come down from the highway down to the beach. Um, so does that give everybody, so I think that's a little group piece junk in there. Is there anything else you could add from that description before you get recommendations?
I think I understand it, but, uh, anybody have questions?
Um.
Council Sim first.
I really love the concept of this and I think it's, it's very clever and I think it fits with the whole philosophy. My only concern, and I raised this at the November meeting, is I am not comfortable, uh, 40 kilometers all year round.
So I don't think that is going to be part of the recommendation.
Okay, I just needed to make sure, because it is in their design proposal, so I just needed to make sure that that's not there.
Yeah, can you, so, so 30 and 50, are we doing every notch of state?
Yeah.
Year round, or just the way it is?
The way it is right now.
Yeah, so no change from the speed, um, restriction, um, on that direction. So, yeah, at thi- at this point, and it's kind of in the recommendation, that we're looking to get approval to be the next step for the realignment, um, but it doesn't specifically, um, that's right, the speed limit, yeah.
Essentially, we would be looking for getting public input as part of this, I think, that's magnificent.
Thank you. This has been brought by the public before, similar version of it, um, was brought by, I believe, one of our real estate agents a while back.
Round the head?
Yeah.
That trail through the parking lot.
He also wanted no parking on one side of the road or the other. This is, I like this idea better because it puts the parking on the side of the road and then the cars become a buffer for pedestrians. Council Fizzle.
With the parking, it's going all the way up to hell? How far off the hill?
I think the blue is the parking on the map on page.
The parking, you know, with the bump, um, for this, so before, uh, when it's coming down this way, I have to find your, your.
So it's after that? Okay. So is there gonna be a pathway cut in, like say at the top of the hill, so that they can roll up? No, I have to get off of this.
Yeah, so the, the parking starts at, um, so the trail comes all the way down, but the parking starts, yeah, you'll see on the, on the map if you click the link.
Is that?
The blue, the blue line.
Yeah.
So it kind of, you know, uh.
Oh, okay.
Like the far end of the parking.
Very quiet.
Side is to get back to the top.
Well, for the bottom, gotta check, try to check.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Well, that's after that, I'll let where people park right now.
And it does tie into the new, uh, park area that we're trying to develop, that path.
Yeah.
Which would mean a longer speed limit. Uh, it's beautiful.
So there is a recommendation?
I can get that to the right, do you?
I'll, I'll see you back with recommendations.
Okay, uh, so the recommendation is that council gives consideration and approval to keep anything in the session for the next step for the realignment of the alternative traffic pathway and parking as a part of design drawing number 610, 811, 2019, which aligns the north east pathway parallel to the parking lot on the north side or the lake side along North Thompson Highway. And that the repositioning and repainting of the north east pathway and parking lines move two ways into the traffic to the south side of North Thompson, North Thompson Highway.
And you're moving that, so we have a seconder.
What's that comment?
Um, Council Fizzle, uh, further discussion? Being not all over the favor. Uh, moving on to, I'm Steve, junior council, Pat Sim.
Uh, no meeting yet to determine. I just did wonder if, um, the banner project came about or, like, it did?
Um, I think it's going out tonight or tomorrow.
Oh, terrific, great, thank you very, very much.
Yeah, we have a record, she's a track. But in the gap, yeah, well, 12:50 is what they pay, so we're doing 500. YCS 250, CSF 250, CSR 250.
Oh, great, all right. Gosh, that would be an interesting goal for the.
Uh, Council McKenzie, fortune working group.
Uh, next meeting will be July 7th.
Um, economic development task force, Council Sim.
Uh, the next meeting is June the 22nd.
Uh, tourism well three, our June meeting was, uh, capital blast postponement since July. And well, say, maybe force mission, Council Taylor.
Uh, there have been new meetings, all those sub-meetings that next to decide the third race, um, uh, kind of like you were saying, um, but, uh, I don't, I don't think I can reveal the results of that.
Uh, moving on to item 15, uh, CAO staff report, you have it in your agenda package. Any questions are coming to the CAO or from the CAO on the report? Well, I think, yeah, maybe huge amount of work.
I think it's slowed down with COVID-19.
This is the slow version, you heard that. Okay, if there's no questions, sorry, this is rescan here, no questions on that. We've dealt with, uh, item 15B. Moving on to item 15C, chip storage. Page 74 of your agenda package. So we talked about this for a while now, obviously this is something, this is the next step. Um, I believe it's, uh, according to the report, it's on school district land, but the school district's already approved that. Uh, do you want to talk to them?
Um, so we, as, you know, we've, um, have two facilities that take chips. And that one went down last June, we were found with no supplier, so we did work through the force reverse, uh, small facility and, um, have secured our chip supply with, uh, local entrepreneur, a salvage worker. Um, he supplied chips, chips have worked out really well, we were just, they were gonna be drying up and that's been good, great. However, to continue supplying us, he really does need, uh, to be able to take them off site. So we've got other entrusted parties that are pursuing, um, really supply well, which is awesome, because that's what you want. And, um, it's also less expensive if we can have a time called in, and then it's there and carry on. And if redundancy as well, if something does go down for him, we've, uh, chip pile. So, um, as you see the building, um, the preliminary building guidance is done by the, um, architect, um, type guy. It would be a 700, um, a whole 700 cubic, some years, so, I don't know, 14 years. It's a 30 by 16 by 15 building, it would require a building permit. Um, because, um, back and forth was in the form, they were providing a bill 22, $15,000 a year to the district for chip supply. Um, so what we're doing is we're trading that money for the lock block that we put bottom of the building, as it shows here, for the coming year. The building will be donated as part of that, so there's no cash payout there. And, um. Important to know. So the, um, there's a couple of ways to fund it. The, uh, I did have a bunch of others looking at the gas tax, and that's why I got the thought on here. So we could use some of the gas tax funding, um, originally council during the budget process that had talked about using, um, uh, council contingency, so you do have a $7,000 budget line under council contingency. So the recommendation, um, of the staff would be that you would split the difference, so 30,000 would come from council contingency and 30 from gas tax. And the reason for that is so that you don't need, uh, so the gas tax we like to use if we can for leveraging other grants or projects that are used to get that funded.
Questions of this crew or staff? Council Taylor.
I think you have a question, which is kind of why not just use the gas tax money? Because, just because I had the sentiment that gas tax had more restrictions than how it could be used, but if we're considering, we probably have more freedoms than that.
Yeah.
But if, if we're kind of safeguarding gas tax for other purposes, that's what I can see.
Well, about 279 this year, so we use 60, I'm probably using, um, 219 or 2, um.
So more.
I can do that, 249. But that is actually after conference, because it is, gas tax is getting a little bit more open, but it does, it is restricted. If you thought you were gonna have some kind of, um, emergency type stuff to come out of the council contingency, but we haven't.
We go around in 2020.
Anything else, Scott?
Further questions, Council Taylor?
Well, yeah, and that, I think, you know, when we talked about having this last, I know this is one thing we talked about, um, but obviously also thinking about how we can support the community in what are the economic downturn that we all expect is coming, um. So, yeah, I, I, I guess it's just, I, I, you know, I think we should move ahead, I think we should. With the, um, storage unit, I can fully support them with that, if they have a need, fund that. Um, and which is the best of those two options? Either, either fully fund if we've got that tour or option one of the.
Council Sim.
I really like where you're going with that, Council Taylor, I think that that's a wise thing. But I am just curious of what other projects might come down this time, like just some of the things, I mean, we had to shell a number of them, so what might we be sacrificing? So I would look at maybe 15 from, uh, council contingency and then the gas tax, um, would be a consideration that I would go for. But I want to make sure, like, is that gas tax gonna be our sewer, right? Or any, anything, like, is, we were skinny this year, so, um.
Well, that's, that's sorry, you can't, for the, uh, council background I seen earlier, we can't use gas tax for the cell one project because we cannot start grant.
Okay.
So that could look to.
Okay.
Clear by that.
But you could use it for other fixers.
That's, I was looking at the other fixes.
Council Bassler, I understand, again, I appreciate the phone calls, one, you can't, you can't leverage a grant with other grant money.
It's a lot of provincial federal money.
So in other words, if you have a grant as gas tax is, you can't leverage it. You can't use that money to leverage anything else. So you could use council contingency to leverage something else.
Right.
If you wanted to, whatever else, everything. So in some ways spending the gas tax money is a good thing, because unless there's other things that we want to use it for, we're gonna try to leverage it, whether we have other projects. But I from this morning to say you can't sort of, this is the sort of thing for whoever else can't use any of that money.
Right. Council Taylor.
Adding on the same theme, so, um, if something else came along that we would have technically used gas tax for, could we not just buy the, the council contingency, if, uh, maybe not?
If we burned through the whole 200 and.
Yeah. I, I just, I just, yeah, just because the, um, the sense that the gas tax has a slightly more innovation with contingency, we can keep that, but either something that we would have used the gas tax for, or we didn't use it for storage building, or something else entirely different. It gives us more flexibility in what we have left in the overall.
Uh, Council Taylor, or sorry, Bassler, sorry. You're looking at my screen, do you, Council?
So the only other question I have this morning, and I'm, I'm not sure if there's any more available, is one of the things the mayor said that after drawing for some other projects, do we know what other project we may have that we may be looking at using gas tax for, to use it to, unless we're going to have to, or something like that?
Well, this year, um, council was going to use 20 for the official community plan, I'll be able to point at council. And 26 was for another project, which I have for tonight, presentation, but it's in print. So the 46,000 we had identified, you can talk about, for gas tax for this year's budget. So the 279 and after the 46 would be, well, now that we're running from that sort of money, I might want to actually appoint, Council Taylor, um, to use the gas tax up and then protect it.
Other questions, Council Herring? Nope, all good. Uh, so there isn't a recommendation on the table yet, because nobody officially made it. Um, somebody wished to make a recommendation.
I was counting your recommendation for approval, which approved in three. You all the gas tax options being to use, because we have a lot of that.
Okay, seconder on that? Council Herring, second is up, discussion?
That was going to what, 219?
218, uh, 20 back for the ODP. The 239.
So our 290, so that final amount is for everything.
Yeah.
And that includes the proposed project, what we have.
Yes, it includes the extra cash that we're getting this year. Well, we're not getting extra even when we made a stomach up. We're getting our two checks in one, in order. And whatever we normally get for gas tax for these.
Still have two thirds, right?
Yeah, you don't think there are any.
It used to seem so much.
Um, oh, I remember, the other one is for the fencing and the stuff that's receiving, and so we're kind of hoping that that was going to the current amount that we're getting.
Further questions? You got all those in favor of that? Okay, that passes. One more thing off the list. Uh, moving on to item D, integrated stormwater sewer management asset assessment. Uh, there's a recommendation, is anybody gonna speak to this one?
I can, um, so actually it's about 2,000, 15, 16, we've been having some major water downwaters that have affected our source, our sewer system, that we don't really have much of. Um, so we would, as our next step, now that we've got a road strategy, we would like to propose that we utilize 5,000 of the, um, road filtration devices, which you can be able to pay with, and apply for the grant of $10,000 to do a stormwater management assessment of five per story. So where have the subdivision would be a good one, um, the bottom of park and Crowe Village is a big issue. They fell is a big issue, there's issues on down road. There's no shortage of places we should be considering down there.
I'm with that.
Okay, seconder on that, by Council Fizzle. Uh, any more further discussion on that? Nope, all those in favor? And that's passed, thank you. That's good, good thing to get it done, considering what happened in Calgary the other day. We are lucky, we've had that almost, pretty close. Um, moving on to item F, source to tap protection plan, there's a recommendation as well.
Oh, you missed one.
Oh, good, I saw a road maintenance strategy.
So now that you've had the report provided to you at the district committee of the whole, uh, meeting, um, we do.
We do need to accept the documents that get implemented into our department management plan. And we're getting them into our asset management plan and our budget process.
So we're just accepting it formally in this meeting. There's a recommendation, somebody wished to move a second, by Council Sim. Council Herring, did you second that? Yeah, okay, question, or sorry, discussion? Saying not all those in favor. Thank you. Now moving on to Source to Tap Protection, the killing portion of your agenda today.
And this was a requirement of their condition of permit for a water system. And this has been on the books before two thousand eleven. Now, the modules will be equipped with computer done, so we accept the documents that go into the interior health. And we start working through. And as you were heard, we actually don't have very many recommendations in this file. We've actually done quite well. But if a good document is best to stop the condition for the requirement.
Questions, Council Badman?
This is more of a due diligence thing for us, we're both up and pretty quite often, we have the things in place, so if you have any questions, we can answer it.
Yeah, so it's another one of those reports where we've actually accomplished recommendations.
Yeah, it's scanning through as much of this as I can absorb. This is very good. I mean, we're in good position when it comes to water versus a whole bunch of other communities. Recently had a discussion with my former R S O, which is Rec Section Officer for B C Park. And the entire B C Park system is having to go away from surface speed to drill wells. And that's our well over a hundred million dollars for the office, the water system, so they operate that. Yeah, yeah, and the fact that Clearwater has had, been on top of it and has been more forward thinking, we've got Hatchet Creek, but we've also had multiple well sources that are good and tested and a good plan. It's going to save us a lot of money along with, and yeah, so it's good work. So there is a recommendation, somebody wished to move a second? By Council Badman, seconded by Council Mackenzie. All those in favor? Thank you. Moving to the last page, there is no correspondence with response required. If you wish to speak to an item on the correspondence items, wave your hand frantically. Item eighteen A, Response to V C M, Re- flood Risk Management, Flood Mapping Mitigation.
Do you read why?
Way overscribed.
Way overscribed.
And probably we're not. Chase didn't? That's crazy.
Yeah, not surprising. Be surprising, question, yeah?
I'm wondering if there was any follow-up. It would be really interesting to see what electoral areas did get some of this funding.
The anomaly, probably, oh, maybe one.
It's, well, it used to be all sort of around, but I haven't seen it come up on one of the, part of the year. I think so, there was an email between our C O and the municipal district.
I, I'd just, I'd be interested to track some of the dispersments given. The interior has been hit so badly by the flooding. I, I'm really shocked that some of those other areas didn't.
But so many places, I mean, other, healthy, the north, the northeast have all been hit in the last while. And I think it's just such a bigger problem than it's ever been because of climate change. Okay, item B, Summary of Big Camera Decisions Released to Public, H two one two. Update from Ministry of Health, for COVID nineteen homeless encampment, health issues. Correspondence from B C Real Estate Association, for COVID nineteen real estate shareholders joint recommendations. And T N R D, Regional District Inspection Services, basically filling permits. Nothing, no notice of motion, no other business. Comments from the public? Hello, Roundabout, no comments? Thank you for coming.
The next meeting is July the fourteenth, so you don't have one.
No, we go to, we go to one in, one in July and August because there's less of that, there's a lot of the.
It's good to be back amongst you guys.
Yeah. I see Goldie in the building every once in a while, so we're. We, we have to go, we have to move into camera in this part and then adjourn, and then we go out to take a ten-minute break and then come back to the in camera. Okay, so there's a motion to move into cam, a recommendation to move into camera, the meeting be closed to the public for certain. Section ninety-one E K of the community charter has got matters relating to the acquisition, admission of expropriation of land or improvement if council considers that disclosure could reasonably be expected to harm the interests of municipality negotiations related discussions respecting the role of provision of municipal service that are at their preliminary stages and that in the view of the council could easily be expected to harm the interest of the municipality if they were held in public. Well, if that doesn't tell you what we're talking about. Can I move her in a second or on this, please? Moved by Council Taylor, seconded by Council Mackenzie, all those in favor? Thank you, a motion, no, we don't actually adjourn yet.
No.
Okay, good. Okay, we're going to take a ten to fifteen minute, three, three tenish. And you'll have to call back into the other meeting, thank you.